...dollars and we feel that they deserve it and I feel that but we're going to discuss it at the next board meeting so that's how much we would have to pay back.
And I'd like to point out it's not just any of ours opinions and meeting with the original landowner and hearing from some of the individual, the new homeowners, this has been vetted completely by our general counsel and these rate, these, the amounts of the refunds have been negotiated in good faith based on verbal and some written history because this has been going on for many, many years and this would be the upshot. So again, it's, it's in the budget, hopefully it's in the right line, doesn't matter to me, as long as the dollar figure is in there. We have, well, no we haven't. Next Wednesday we will consider if we are going to go forward with these refunds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney fees, this, I feel good about this too because for a while I was complaining about our attorney fees and now I'm using them more than anybody. Hey, I'd rather be honest with you, you know, when you, when you have people leave and you have new people coming in and contracts, you need outside counsel. Even though we are spending on a line item ahead of budget this year, many of the, also because of transitions after the election, but then other issues relative to the election and new hires and we were hoping to contain that. I guess what I'm trying to say is even at keeping at a, at a stronger clip than I would like to see us rely on, it seems to me that we only need about a 6% or $2,000 increase next year. And of course, the goal would be not to need that, but right now with new people and searches going on and things like gaslight and it's good to be prepared, so. And then, this is something that the board, I think passed in May, just last month. Oversized water main under Blue Star, this is the pipe some of you have heard about, that goes on the Blue Star Highway down 135th Avenue and the gist here is that North Shore and one of their subsidiaries which is building storage facilities on that side of, of Blue Star feels they need a higher capacity water source pipe. The township and the fire department feel that this would not just serve the North Shore development but other future developments and it just dawned on me, I would imagine this would be a benefit to the, I don't know if it has a name, but the benefit of, the development on the other side of 135th Street, the 22 homes would be pound being excavated by, anyway. So, this has been negotiated again with our attorneys, North Shore's attorney, fire department, us, and from everything I read, and this is a lot lower than we were originally told, but I think the obligation of the township is about $23,000 and that is now in the budget. So these finals, well, all the finals actually, and again, this is where I'd really like to, you guys to chip in and think and, you know, again, it's what I call the wish list, if there's increases in spending that are not in the budget yet or, one thing a couple of us have talked about for quite a while is the need for real hardcore focused economic development planning. I mean, the township has so much undeveloped land and so much potential, I mean, we can tell by the permits, we're going pretty quickly anyway, but are we growing with any guidance from the people of the government or as I've often said, I mean, are we just being reactive? Someone comes in and says, I want to do marijuana growth, how do I do it versus gee, we really should have some, you know, entry, you know, lowering come housing for young families or maybe we need some retirement development since we don't have any here and not everyone wants to move to Holland or Grand Rapids to get that kind of care. Just a couple ideas. So, this is just a ballpark figure, maybe some studies that would support if we did it and again, I think this might be something we reach out and do on a tri-community basis, but it's an idea.
Is there something going on in the old haywards with Douglas, is that part of their goal to do retirement?
I've read that and that's Barker, the guy that did President Tierney Camp. I, when I opened this earlier, when I read the paper, we all know you can't believe everything you read in the paper verbatim, but he talks about retirement, living to some degree and I hope that's true.
And I, yeah, and if we could all do it together, SagaTuck, Douglas and.
I, I do know something about this.
You're, that's great.
There is a tri-community master plan that got developed and adopted in 2016.
Oh yeah, agreed.
It gives you some guidance of what you should check.
No, that's a very good point.
Okay.
But so much of that hasn't, it's just sat there or even been willingly ignored by governments, but you're right. This, again, I know was a hot button for Natalie and I think all of us are, it's, it's better than I sometimes say it is, but our website needs some work and Abby's done an incredible job. I tried in the beginning and it was not, it was she took over. She can make additions and changes and, and corrections and alerts, which is great, but I think it needs a little more attention to that and to ignore it, you know, I look at our neighbors and I get a little jealous and that also relates to this e-newsletter. Some people have posted on that, but the cities, you know, we used to have one and we stopped doing it. We have no communication directly to our constituents and our residents and it's so easy to do, now I say that like, yeah, but, you know, it can be a mail chain, it can be, but then the key ethic is to market it and my goal when I got here was to get a notice in the tax bills that go out July 1st saying, please sign up for our newsletter. I mean, I get Douglas and SagaTuck and they're, they're full of information and their links to the minutes and the agendas and all the things that we do manually and in other ways, but this one I get very worked up about and I think with people we know, we could probably get this going for a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah. I think it's important.
All right, I'm going to take a break. I mean, do you want to, no, I don't mean that kind of break.
No, yeah.
Do you want to, does anyone want to bring up some other potential items now or ask questions before we move forward?
I have a couple comments on the last section that we just went over. I guess for the economic development, I think that is, when I hear that, I think that's a wish for, like, it's because we don't have a supervisor, we don't have a manager right now or let's see them as really being key, that means you know, a manager and that type of role, it's something that, I think you explained it really well, that really putting some thought and vision and structure into growth rather than being reactionary is amazing. So, I would hope that would happen, I don't know if it'll happen in the next year, you know, but, and then for the website and the newsletter, those figures that you're suggesting and I think they're very conservative, would, have you thought about how those would be used? If we would contract somebody to come in and do that or have you put any thought to?
Yeah, no, I think in both cases that'd have to be contracted.
Okay, okay. That answers my question.
Okay. Well, since we're looking at this chart, we'll get into more detail later, as I mentioned, we ran a budget versus actual for this year and I just want to report sort of the headlines here. So this is all spending from last July 1st through, basically through today and on the expense spending side, we're $128,000 under budget, which means we've spent another way of looking at it. We spent 82% of this year's budget, however, I mean, that's good and a lot of lines are under as you'll see later, but this doesn't count June spending or this week's payroll, which I estimate, I think this is on the high side because again, I want to go like a, not worst case, but I think we might spend another $145,000 before the end of the fiscal year, but I won't really know, so, but I still think having said that, that we've got June and the summer May expense, I'm pretty confident we're going to end the year under budget on expenses. On the revenue side, this is even better news, we're $82,000 over, a lot of this is driven by the increase in the permit income that we talked about, so we're at, you know, we're at 111% of this year's budget of revenue, so it's good, it's very good. And again, I don't mean to tease, but I did mention it, when you look at spending on the department level, we have no other overages that we need to address next week in terms of a budget of method resolution. The one we did for elections, that's still the only one.
Okay, that's great.
All right, so shocking pain to wake you up. The next section, this is the current draft, the next year's fiscal budget. Yeah, I, if you want to go page by page, I'm not quite sure what makes the most sense for the, the audience as well as ourselves. I've identified significant changes, or we, you can study this and we, you know, ask me questions later as we prepare the final version. I mean, I guess I'll just point out a few things, like if you start with the top line, current property tax that goes into the general fund, you know, you can see that's a 15% increase going, I'm sorry, yes, because the percent change in the far right column, that is the change versus the amended budget for the far left column, not the actual, so, it's an increase of 15%. And I gave you the subtotal on permits, it doesn't show subtotals down here, this is line by line, but we've, we've kind of talked about that. This first page is mainly beyond the revenue, it's the salaries.
What's homestead denial?
That's when someone applies for a homestead, a PRA, personal residence exemption and then the board review denies it, so we might have given them the tax break.
This is very small, but I forgot to mention it to you, I'm going to see it now, border review.
Yes.
I do believe that we need to, with, I think it was Don made or what, it's no longer on border review, we'll need to appoint somebody to that and I believe that person does need to complete a training.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure, I mean, I'm sure it's not outrageous, but I can try and find that out from Sherry and let you know.
Okay.
The cable TV fee, is that for the township cables?
Yeah, Comcast, it's, you know, we used to call it franchise fee, they, they send us a check, I think it's quarterly, it may only be twice a year, but they pay us for access to the community and we imagine, and I say we because Lori, your deputy clerk, is involved in this too, it can only increase because as you may be hearing, they haven't gone very public yet, but you might know, I don't know, the, this, this, the laying of the fiber optic cables for Comcast is actually happening and they're signing new people up in the township that had no, no access to high speed internet and I'm hearing a lot of these new neighborhoods will be serviced by August.
Is this down Old Elegant by chance or?
Yeah, I was late months and months ago, but we never, never heard another word.
Okay, well, you're, you're.
It's the one same land, do they hook it up or?
I know, well, I'm hearing they're telling people August, I mean, they don't tell us.
Okay.
You know, I have a contact in Grand Rapids that I give out to people because he's the head of external affairs, but call them, I mean, you know, they owe it to us, but as their business grows, they do owe us money, so.
They might get real internet.
Yeah.
And people would love it.
Absolutely.
We'd be popular.
We'll take that. We got that man's name, I love you, okay. Okay.
Now, the building permits and election, that's the money we collect from?
Yeah, that's the gross fee and then I told you, netting it out, it's still cumulatively all those fees, projecting 60,000, 61,000 that next year. And for those reading along that maybe haven't looked at our budget before, just back to what I said upfront in terms about the rather complicated nature of the structure of our budget, you can't look in this part of the budget and see gee, how much does the supervisor make because some is under supervisor, some, I mean, the way things are divvied up, shall we say, it's hard to follow that. We will look at a total at the end relative to remuneration, but I just want to point that out, that it, it makes it hard. Like on page two, if you look under halfway down inspections, administrative assistant, well, that 19,4 is not, I mean, that's a portion of a person, it's actually, in this case, it's most of what they get because they mostly work with inspections, but.
That's for using Linay and, I can't think, Kyle?
Kyle.
Our expenses are going down in that area, correct? I mean.
They're certainly down for the, you know, initially.
Right, oh God, overtime.
I can't pro, I mean, I think they'll stay down and then, you know, because with both of you, there's a, a question came up this week and I haven't heard the final answer yet, I hope to get it before the final budget, but I was under the understanding that our retired former professor was willing to come back and help with board review in June and some people think she's expected to come back for more than that, you know, we, we need to know that.
We do, we do.
And Kyle's only, you know, Kyle's not full time.
Right.
So it may be okay, but.
I think we need to know that and we need to determine and support what we, what we would want, I mean.
Right, I agree. And again, we don't know what someone else might have implied or promised.
How's it working? Do we feel like it's working so far? I mean, are we having, I mean, we don't know, right?
I may not be the best tough judge of this, but, you know, I mean, I were talking and, you know, because I'm there in the office and, hey, Kyle strikes me as doing an amazing job, just walking in here. He met with Sherry one morning, he's envious and he's connected, he can get into our BSNA as our software, tracking system for everything to do with assessing taxes, but everything. If we didn't have BSNA, there'd be no township government. He can do that at home, yes, he has underclass, but he's really smart. I've told people he's going to be here Tuesday at nine and they come back because they want face to face for their PRA interview and, you know, he's doing it.
It's running great.
Yeah, he'll never be as sweet and kooky as Sherry, but he's friendly, he's smart and I have a very good feeling about what he's going to be able to do for us.
Just to kind of add on to what was, and clarify what Stacy, her question is, when we looked at Sherry's salary compared to Kyle's, when we looked at the, and we'll just take, you know, the old zoning administrator salary, right, for comparison?
Yeah.
Compared to Linay's, is that a cost savings? I know we could, they could say your volume is greater than what we expected or you're asking us to be at all these additional meetings, whatever, and that may change, but right now, would that be a cost savings over the year? That's what we're talking about.
Thank you for reminding me.
That's what I wanted to do.
You answered it, but I just, well, so far, I, like, you know, if you compare number, what that would cost a year and what this will cost a year, is that a cost savings?
When Aaron Sheridan resigned, relative to the manager landscape, he was paid on the conservative side, his exit stra, his exit salary and Steve Cushion, the zoning administrator who had left in Au, October, the two together were less than, we were paying Natalie for the combined job, which we had to approve, well, the budget is that way, but we were going along with this notion that efficiency is a good idea to combine these two jobs. Clearly, we're thinking differently now because we're just entering into a search for a manager who's strictly a manager and might be back closer to the conservative end, maybe less, you know, not 20 years' experience like Natalie brought here, so that will come down. And even so, and I will point out, just being honest, the way that, who deal with a, with a well-structured, you know, there's a base fee and right now she is working a little bit more above that, partly because she knows she had a vacation planned in June and this plan and it's expensive, it's in Europe, so she's not going to drop it for us. And she's preparing tomorrow, she's coming in next today this week to get the packets ready because Andy and the planning commission have a hearing, a meeting with some hearings in it on Monday and, you know, that's her job to get those packets ready, so, if it inches up, we'll know, but again, she's also not permanent and she's, we have a one month out at any time in time. So we get a manager in here and another board member, we can strategically talk about, gee, do we, is Linay doing, is she so perfect and she likes us and we like her that we just keep her going or do we need to bring in a full head zoning industry?
Relevant to that, kind of, can, before we tie up the budget, would it be possible for us or you to project what the difference in the net income would be or lost if we chose a service like MTS?
Yeah, I think.
That's one of my biggest questions and it may be too premature for that, but I would like.
I actually did it last night, I did, I think I did it in my head.
Yeah?
I'd have to check my notes.
Okay.
I'd have to work that out.
Your head notes?
It was significantly in our favor this time.
Okay.
Because this is the net.
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
Brett is asking if we went to.
Just the last part, I, I got that.
What's in the budget now, with the income coming in and the expense to services, that is about.
The way we're doing it now?
That's about 60% net, well, no, I can answer, 60% net where the other way is 10%.
But you don't know projected figure, you know.
Well.
Right.
Somebody has to comment up here, Mike.
There is a state law that says your income from your building permits and your construction code permits cannot significantly exceed the cost of administration, so you might keep that in mind, you can't.
And how does that, how do these, and of course, and all, ours is not all strictly, our permitting is not just for built, but it's a combination.
It's construction code, building's electrical, building's mechanical, all together.
Okay, well, that's a good point, but then we need to find out what exceeds.
Yeah, yeah, but the threshold limit.
And we've not ruled out changing in the future. I think that issue's come up before.
Yes.
Township in the past has used an outside service like the two cities do, they used that when our lead inspector was incapacitated years ago, but then we also looked at it from, and I feel great that we did this now, more than ever, we also looked at it from the service point of view. I mean, the traffic into this office, the amount of construction and development permitting in the township, and again, I'm just kind of guessing at this, but if you combine SagaTuck and Douglas, I bet the two together and we're five or six or more times that because we've got the space to do that and people are trained to do that. As they come in and ask for permits and people say, gee, I never would have asked for that in some other place, but, and they're used to it and this was not a time to interrupt that kind of public service and, you know, service with a capital S with the other changes, so. But we did say maybe in the new fiscal year, not, not July 1st, it might be worth it, point taken.
So you want us to just scan this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to look for anything to pop out because like I said, I've, I've pinpointed, and then, you know, like the different, you know, like elections comes up in two or three different places, so when the first time you see it, you don't see the supply and the tabulator because it's on a subsequent page. So if there's something like that, that you think you can't find, I will try to help you find it, either now or later.
What's the recycling?
Yeah, that's funny, did I know it was recycling? It's in there because we used to have a recycling service and a, we paid a assessment for it. That's how I first learned about the power of reading your tax bill. We never participated in the township recycling, yes, it was an opt out, not opt in, so we've been paying for it on our taxes for a while. Now, when I came in and spoke to the then clerk, they were very gracious and took it off, so I was like, okay. So structurally, that's why it's still there. Any money that you see there now though is relative to the cleanup day, which is coming up this Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday.
Because we have to pay Georgia.
We don't have to be done, do we?
No, we don't have to be done.
Okay.
But then some charges evolve and.
Bring your half net suit.
One thing I have to just point out, and again, over time, we can change the, the naming and the wording of things in here, it's one thing that popped out to me, you'll see on a few pages, charges for service and then digging into seeing what they were, I mean, they were, they were waters, they were hookup charges in sanctuary and ravine, that's what, well, maybe not called hookup, but kind of connection fees.
Yes.
You know, it just makes it harder at this level to. And last year, we had pretty substantial income for that, but sanctuary doesn't have any empty lots anymore, so.
It's almost laughable to bring it up, I think, the constable?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I can't believe.
That light and then it's lit going forward.
Yes, because I took it out.
It's got some light up high.
That should have been number one of my highlights, I can't believe, I even told, I told Lori about that today.
That should have been on your overview at just.
Wow, well, you know, we've been questioning that constable for a long time. I can't believe I forgot to put it on my highlight. Yes, the township's budget is $12,000 a year for who gathers how long for a constable, which to me, a constable is a cop in Mary Poppins, but I'm older than them, but apparently it has something to do with district giving them a liquor license.
Oh, really? I thought it was just code enforcement.
No one knows and no one has one. You have a constable in the city? Okay.
I know it's in the MTA material somewhere, I did read, I don't remember what.
What's it doing with code enforcement?
So I guess I should have looked up what it was before I cut.
Is that right? No, we don't have one.
Because it came up today and I don't even remember what it was, it was a tabular, I don't know.
It's like if you have to serve somebody with a warrant, that's what they do.
If we, if the township does, okay. I think it came up, it doesn't matter what it was with the tabular, it was some cost that was incurred before our last manager left and Lori asked about, well, it's not on the budget, what should we pay for, it's the charges to the constable line, but I mean, it's one thing that, we might have a contingency line, if you are on a bigger miscellaneous line, let's have one.
Right, yeah.
Good, I'm so glad you asked that.
Yeah.
The constable, good job.
John, under, on page four, under road activities appropriation transfer out, now, is that part of the fund we talked of earlier, about earlier that we were going to try to reduce by?
Yeah, yeah.
So is that the remainder or is that what it was? It sounds like a familiar figure, you know what I mean?
Yes, I do, let's see, so roads, yeah, the out was 34.
So then you were going to reduce that by 24, correct, on the front page?
Right, because it shows up, I mean, they show up in two places, so it might be that I did it in the.
Somewhere else?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'll, let me find that out.
Okay, okay.
That's important, because they do show up in two places.
Okay.
What's line 209, what is, is that just? What's, what tool, now, what is, is that just?